I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I pause this in further detail?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Item four A, Kerber-Frieder Skew, up to the board.
Like cheapness?
Good evening.
Okay, good evening, Dan.
Any questions on my recording or if I wanna kinda go into our dissonation that we had?
I'm not sure anybody noticed.
I know Anne told me that. What I found always that when storms come through, we can produce some bag electric vehicles in the panels and it can set off just the right signal to set off. So what they did is they set that part of the panels off, so it shouldn't happen again, but we're still gonna get some batteries together because on the battery disconnects down low and full, so we don't have to walk on the ladder in storms and such to get disconnected, so.
Because that was one of the big delays was actually pulling out the truck going up fifteen feet.
Yep.
On pulling the box apart and then disconnecting the batteries and.
Yep.
The panel and by having that panel or the disconnect down lower, you basically could dispatch out somebody from the fire department or public services.
Yeah, one of the chiefs or whatever, as soon as they paid us off, the guy could be there in two minutes or whatever and then we could have it all off, so it wouldn't be, instead of being.
Twenty-five minutes?
Well, I think it might have been almost thirty minutes by the time we got the ladder up, but it just woke me up.
I didn't hear it.
I got it on my own, my dad, so my wife woke me up as she figured it, so.
It's in my backyard. I've heard people in Chaska downtown heard it. And how many, was Kerber Bluffs the only one that went off?
Oh, never.
Okay. Yeah, in my backyard.
I guess maybe I was out. My wife didn't hear it, it gone.
So for those of you in Kerber Bluffs in the area that didn't hear it that night, I'm gonna get weather ready now for when the storm really comes in. Alright, any questions at all? I do appreciate the, you know, looking at it right away and getting it figured out and so it's up and functional today?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, they went to recheck other sirens again and they followed the issue with the charge, it's just a lot of blind parts, so they, they think they got it fixed now, they fixed it about a month and a half ago, two of them was again, so. It's one of the things without, has AC power collar and other ones are on solar collar, but they think it should try switching over to solar collar, so a little kind of charging issue. They think it's just getting too much voltage running through.
And the test is this one stayed correct, the next one? So it confirmed that work? Okay.
If you can switch over to solar, it's actually naturally needs something, does that battery work that light on here?
Yeah, it's gonna put a heat lamp.
But, yeah, the solar panels aren't totally been used for quite years on other sirens, we haven't really had any issues with those.
They just go off right at the end of the.
He's insane.
Why is this IC number?
Alright, Dan.
Thanks.
Dan?
We only have one server on solar pulse.
Only one?
The rest of them are on DC.
Okay. I was just mobile, what they told me?
It's one of them.
Try to talk to call.
That's what I asked her.
He's gotta look at them every Monday when they need to set off.
How many guests you didn't respond to that night?
Uh, yeah, I was getting two phone calls, please. Calling or texting back and forth. And Dan was, I, I, I.
I will come up. I will come up to you.
Alright. Uh, Deputy Goff?
Welcome. Thank you, good evening, everyone. As always, we're helping out with the course, so this will be the monthly report for April of twenty thirteen. In April twenty thirteen, we had thirty-four traffic stops, two arrests for DUI, six citations issued for theft at Mills Wheat Farm, one citation issued for speed, one citation issued for no proof insurance. Uh, corstate on the theft of the utility trail, full scrap out, one individual is arrested for an outstanding warrant. And then last but not least, Deputy Jeff Trick will be starting night shifts starting June tenth.
Good boy, that's my bet. Does a good job.
Any comments, scenarios?
Appreciate what you do, brother. Thanks, Admiral.
Thank you, thank you, great.
We'll move on to item six, consent agenda.
I'd also need your group consent agenda.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Item eight, aid, Ford Street request reconstruction project, Mr. Boyman. Welcome. We got papers taking the hot seat now.
Yeah, this is, I know you should get the sit, this chair is soft.
Big thanks, Adrian.
I'm gonna adjust the height of it.
I wouldn't touch it.
Do you have a certain plan? I do, I have that over here. So we've gotta pull up my pressure reader. Oh, you gotta pull up the presentation here.
Talk exercise.
How beautiful evening.
Those are.
Good to see anyone here. Thanks for coming.
There we go. Yes, my name is Dan Boyman, I am here tonight to talk about our, give an update on the Ford Street last reconstruction project. Um, in general, since some of the last discussions with the public, we received permit approval for bridge removal and replacement from the Corps of Engineers and ship pool. We've prepared the plans that we'll talk about tonight that deal with the bridge, street, and utility improvements, as well as County Road eleven, trail and water main improvements. Um, this detailed kinda shows the overall project location. As you can see on, on the right side, we're, we're reconstructing Ford Street from Broadway down to Hill Drive. And then on the County Road eleven, trail improvements and water main improvements, we're constructing the trail from Ford Street down to Kerber Bluffs Parkway. And then the water main from the wastewater treatment plant area to Kerber Bluffs Parkway. And the purpose of putting that water main extension in at this time is, um, the city has that in their, in their large scale kind of comprehensive water plan and it's to put it in before the trail gets in, so we aren't digging up the trail in the future. Once again, the Ford Street project involves the replacement of the Ford Street Bridge. There's also gonna be some sanitary sewer, um, extension from Jorgensen and replacing some of the existing manholes that need to be repaired. Also, there's new storm sewer, curb and gutter, block, retaining wall, um, street lights, and the Tunis Street. Um, this is a view of the, um, bridge improvements, it's been something that the council has worked on, um, over the winter and giving feedback to us, as well as, um, working with property owners in the area. And so on the, on the south side, right here of the, of Ford Street, there'll be an actual kind of wall, similar to what you see on the Main Street Bridge. Um, but on the north side, there'll be, um, just a parquet wall that matches this side with the railing. And there will be two lights that are being placed on the bridge, there also will be other street lights being placed at, at various locations along Ford Street. As you can see here, we're showing that there will be room for parking on, on both sides of Ford Street with the two travel lanes. And that's gonna continue like that up to Ash Street based on past council feedback. And this is a view from Ash Street looking to the west and, and the first side is, um, um, gonna be, this is the north side or the church side. And where we'll put a sidewalk right next to the New Kerr. And this is looking from kind of the entrance at the church looking to the east. And you can see, um, kinda just what that will look like in the future. Um, in general, as we've talked about before, there's improvements on trail work. Um, going from Ford Street down to County Road forty is gonna be kind of a city paid for project. The city has applied for some DNR funding to help with that project and we should hear back soon on that if, if they'll receive any funding. But the stretch from County Road forty, where it ties into County Road eleven to, um, Kerber Bluffs Parkway, that's being paid for by Carver County through, um, through some of their, um, funding and it's, it's part of their renewal trail corridor. Um, also in this area is where that water main will be replaced along the south side of County Road eleven. The proposed construction schedule on this project right now is to, um, review the plans tonight with the council and, and set a bid date between twenty-seven to two thousand thirteen. Um, we would award construction, um, if the bids turn out favorable on July first, two thousand thirteen. Construction will begin usually two to three weeks after that in July, with a substantial completion approximately a week before Thanksgiving. You can see I, I'm a big fan of Back to the Future because you see all these two thousand thirteen dates, but then final restoration and paving is gonna be done in, actually, June two thousand fourteen. Yeah, kind of a Back to the Future, so, um, just note that that's two thousand fourteen. There are various permits that the city will be receiving, um, there's some agreements that have been being talked with, um, adjacent property owners and those are, um, still being discussed. Um, traffic control plan typically, if you recall from some of the past projects when we've been, um, dealing with the county roads, there's a, a larger detour plan that's set up. At this point in time, uh, whenever we work on the local streets, we usually put advance warning signs, but because it's not typically the county traffic that we're, we're dealing with, we're dealing with local traffic. We'll put up signs, you know, before the, the construction, um, limit starts as well as, um, on either side, the east and west side. Um, you can see here, we're kind of, the, the bridge and that's being removed and replaced, things will be shut down, um, during that period of time, right here at Broadway between Broadway and Jorgensen. But the rest of the area, the contractor will be working in those areas and so we, um, we allow local traffic that's not trying to get through to get to their homes and et cetera during that construction period. So we, we kinda put the barricades up and say open to local traffic, so that's the plan. I know the city is gonna be providing email updates to people who are interested in, um, getting those type of updates. Everyone on the corridor will actually pass out kind of notices, et cetera, when work is going, um, right in front of their property. Um, this picture, that's supposed to be our, our construction supervisor, Mike Hirsch, who he was. Number. Yes, but, um, so he's gonna be out on the project as well as some of our other, um, construction staff members to help out the public with questions and access issues. But in general, every, at the end of the day, you'll, uh, the contractor will backfill their operations and you'll have access to your home. There are gonna be times when they're working right in front of your home, where we'll notify you a few days ahead that, hey, they're gonna be working right in front of your home. You might have to get out earlier that day because they usually start out, starting around seven o'clock. And so there'll be those times, as well as times when the curb and gutter concrete is placed, both driveways where you can't, you know, maybe drive your vehicle on top of the new concrete and walk, et cetera, for, et cetera, for around three days. So there will be those kind of restrictions, um, we know some people have access to, um, alleys, but some people don't have that access, so we'll continue to work with property owners on access. Because this project is reconstructing the streets, there are some private utility work that's gonna be done also. In general, the largest private utility work is the gas line, there's a existing three-inch gas line, that's a metal gas line that they'll be replacing with a plastic line. Um, so they're planning, the city's kind of approved their permits, that work is supposed to start up here in June, they haven't got a specific date, but we'll keep people informed once we have that date. Um, also, Excel will be relocating three poles along the corridor, so that's, um, I think this one in general won't, won't be relocated, but there's one at Jorgensen, one at Ash Street, and then one more further to the, um, on the west end of the project that will be relocated. Whenever Excel relocates their poles, there's also Comcast and CenturyLink are also on their lines, so there will be some work that they have, um, um, in relocating their lines on the new relocated poles. And there'll also be some bearing of some lines, um, at the very western of the project. Um, this is a revised cost estimate that we put together and in general. In general, um, we've showed here the, um, the cost, or is it forty percent of the construction cost would be, um, or the project related cost would be assessed to the property owners? That's been the city's typical policy, they do review that, um, prior to, um, holding an assessment hearing where they actually set the, the assessment that they're proposing. So this is a preliminary assessment roll and it's, I think, very similar to what you saw back in December, um, for the, for the project. The overall project cost is in the council's packet and, let's see. I don't, I have that buried in my pile, so we'll get to that, um, later, but it was around, um, one million four hundred eighty-one thousand, is that what you guys have in the packet? So that involves a lot of the project costs, like the bridge cost, the utility cost, um, bearing power on Sixth Street, um, the trail cost and water main cost. And some of those items aren't actually being assessed to the property owners, so that's why you go from one million four hundred eighty-one thousand down to this, um, um, three hundred three thousand, that would all be assessed. And in general, that's a quick review of the overall project. You could answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Other questions for Dan?
Is this a typical estimate of the cost where it's typically higher when it comes in?
You, you know, we follow the same strategy that we've done on past projects and, and generally that results in, um, costs becoming less than what we anticipated. We are bidding it a little bit later than what you typically bid, I mean, we've tried to bid things in the spring, but with the bridge project and variety of other things, the, we couldn't get bids out as soon as we typically could do. So sometimes, um, contractors, you know, you can have a big, got work built up right now, um, you know, you just have to, there's still contractors that are looking for work. And most of this stuff is, we've heard from some contractors that have started here in June, that they are looking for work, um, in August, um, so it might work out well with some of those contractors, I guess.
Thank you.
And we do anticipate that it'll be open by winter.
Correct, yeah, so usually they'll put the first lift down this, um, this year and then we'll be back next year doing, you know, some final restoration and the final lift of the tunas. But this bridge, you know, bridges will still take a certain amount of time, but it doesn't have the high ride and it doesn't have some of the foundation issues that the previous bridge had. So we, we are anticipating that we won't have some of those issues that we had on the last project. We also are having a, a pre-bid meeting to make sure contractors fully understand the scope of the project and, and we'll also, we're dealing with one contractor, we're not having two different contractors on this project. So that's one general contractor project. Something's beat them over there. Can you still hear me?
There you go, that's better.
Oh. Could you come up, could you come up to the podium? Sorry, I just can't hear you.
Don't mind, I'm five fifteen, I support. I was just looking, this is the same one that's on the website, under the hundred and two hundred three, sorry.
Yes, this would be the same one that was in the council packet.
Okay, are there any other questions for Dan? Just, just, I just wanna mention this is not a public hearing on this, but I'll answer some questions.
No, it's like, just a clarification, even though I haven't been yet, anticipation is it will be done before winter?
Okay, November.
Well, yeah, other than the final restoration.
Well, winter traffic.
Correct. Correct. Not by speaking of the.
That's fine.
In fact, you and Kirk is that.
Yeah, maybe this is more.
You can, could you introduce yourself?
Any address? First reported, uh, the one one six Ford Street, and I just wanted to ask if it'd be more appropriate to contact me, you know, your company, but, um, you mentioned between North and Broadway, about that being trapped, being diverted from that path. For those of us that live within that section, is, is, especially the house, we're looking at a time to not have access to our garage.
So, so between Jorgensen and Broadway, there will be, you know, the area where they're working on the, the bridge itself, but if your, let's see, you said your address was.
One one six, it's the, it's the blue house, it's, you go back to the.
Sure.
Original photo. Yeah, it's, it's the blue one.
On the right side.
Behind that tree, that, I think, one of those trees is coming down.
Yeah, the, the trees on, on that first block, both on the north and the south side, and then there's trees on the north side through Jorgensen, actual being removed with the project. But, yeah, right, right at the bridge itself is gonna be the main area, but, so the property owners right next to the bridge, I think there's, um, uh, well, I mean, when the, when the deep sewer is being done, I mean, there will be, uh, it's probably gonna take them, probably a week and a half to two weeks to put that sewer in. So during that period of time, they'll be digging during the day, backfilling, and they'll, they'll usually, um, with their tight starts, they'll kinda have that kinda fenced off. But we'll work with your, I mean, because you're very close to Jorgensen, so it'll be, it'll be more than likely, probably a week in there when they're coming up Jorgensen and then turning the corner. I mean, you can come up Ash Street and then kinda come down and go, as, as a backhoe every day, we'll kinda have a better handle once we have the pre-construction meeting on their exact schedule and then we can work with you on this access. But there is time, you know, when they're right in front of your house, because it's around thirty feet deep right in that area, that it will, it will have limited access. So I'm saying it's probably a week in that time.
So, and, and also for, for garbage pickup during that time, that's being interrupted or.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm tossing your wall when they're, when they're.
Girl, don't say that, because it's something, I know Wayne might try to do that.
But it sounds like, if I just have a chance, there will be maybe a one to two week period in which there really will be no access to my garage, is it talking about?
Well, no, I wouldn't say no access, I just, I, I know as they come up the street and they turn that corner where it's around thirty feet deep, it's just, I mean, the whole road is gonna be ripped out. But in general, there'll be times when they, um, they won't be able to backfill on a nightly basis because it's just so deep. It would, it would take them, uh, you know, two, three hours to backfill and then two, three hours the next day to take it all up, so they typically will fence that area off. And I, I'm thinking that, you know, because you're closer to Jorgensen, that it's more, um, in this, let's say, less than a week, but I. I better talk with our, um, what I'll do is talk to our construction, that nice looking guy that was on the screen, I'll talk with him and we'll, we'll sit down and, and maybe have a personal conversation with him. Because, yeah, garbage access, as well as emergency vehicle access, is something that we coordinate with the contractor. You know, sometimes there's, um, people have, I don't know, you know, how many mailboxes we have on Ford Street, but there's, um, there's time when we have to relocate.
I don't think we have any on Ford Street.
None, so that's.
Not on Ford Street West.
That's a good sign. So, I mean, there's times when we have to relocate those for.
You do? I take it back, one, two, three.
Three, go.
We're gonna put flags on them.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have to work with, um, you know, the post office and those property owners, sometimes we have to temporarily relocate them. But as far as garbage access, I think that's, we'll, we'll get the idea from the contractor and where he's working and maybe that you have to, you know, push it down to a neighbor's, um, location for pickup, just because we can't get a garbage truck right in front of your house.
I have a question. I think we talked about this before, but I wanna make sure. This is kinda similar to some of the work that was down on Main Street and we did some pre-construction inventory of homes, foundations, because these are historic homes on this street. Are we doing the same?
Yes, well, I mean, all we did it on the, the last bridge project, is we, we put the contractor in charge of the, um, precondition video, um, process, so they will be doing that and we will be doing vibration monitoring during the construction. So we, we do have good, um, feedback from the, the Main, excuse me, the, um, interceptor project on certain levels and certain, um, techniques that the contractor can use. If they're starting to reach that vibration level, that could be definitely.
So the contractor will be very vulnerable to that.
Correct. That's part of, you know, explaining that, once again, the pre-bid meeting, the, um, the ad for bid that goes out and one of the first items is that vibration monitoring will need to be done on this project. So there, that helps them, make them aware of this project and some of those concerns.
Angela Hunt from four twenty-one West Ford Street, and I have a question about a fiber, um, pickering for Carver County. The Waconia, I believe, has been connected now in Waterhouse within a month of connection. Will there be, um, an evaluation about that so that we don't have to dig up and instead we just put to bed?
I think we were, ours started when it installed, we were on the first set.
Okay, thank you very much.
You been here?
PRT still, two one nine Ford Street, just a couple of questions. It looked like the, does the street get wider with being able to park on both sides and drive up?
Yeah, it is, but it is now. Right, the width from, from Jorgensen to Ash gets wider because there's part of that, there's a grass boulevard right now on the north side.
Yeah.
That grass boulevard will disappear to allow for parking on both sides of the street.
Okay, um, and then, uh, does the sidewalk elevation stay similar to what it is?
Yes.
Alright, cool, and then, um.
You just got a one-word answer from Dan Boyman.
The pre-construction check that you talked about, some will they contact us?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, hi, my name is Jesse Hunt, I live at four twenty-one Ford Street. Uh, my question was about the, the retaining wall, is it gonna be an anchor block type, uh, of, of wall? I noticed on our way to church, I mean, very rural by the, um, for retaining, there's a similar wall to the anchor block wall, it's all deteriorated from the salt and, um, snow getting washed out of it. Uh, I was concerned, I, if that would end up happening, I don't know if, if, if there's different grades of, of patching for the, the block or.
Yeah, right, there's, I think you, you'll probably see some of the blocks, even on, like, forty-one, as you're heading north from downtown Chaska, where they're deteriorating. And, and some of the blocks that were put in years ago weren't put in at, at the current, um, concrete strength that the newer blocks are putting in. There's also some, um, coating that can be placed on the blocks to help protect them and so, um, right, so there are two options that we're, um, looking at bidding on the project and, um, one, one was the modular block. One was a sheet pile wall that has also modular blocks, so it will be something similar to an anchor wall. So it will be something similar to an anchor wall block, but it will be, um, meet in that, um, requirements for strength and durability, which is probably, um, they've made some improvements in those blocks over the years to help with that deterioration.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for you? Okay, I think we need a motion to approve the plans.
Excuse me, mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I just want to direct the mayor's call to a letter that we sent to the county regarding, uh, Saint Nicholas Catholic Church. I think, as you know, after public hearing, the reason for terms about the location of the sidewalk.
Speaking about the location of the sidewalk.
And the current plans and specifications locate that sidewalk on the north side of Fourth Street West. Saint Nicholas prefers that sidewalk to be, um, on the south side of Fourth Street West. Uh, we have a letter from their attorney, Larry Martin, which he raises a bunch of concerns related to the city's ability to assess for the project, uh, but also some concerns related to the placement of the sidewalk and Saint Nicholas's, uh, concern for that, which Larry Harris committed to some of the specifics regarding that. Uh, when Saint Nicholas contacted their attorney and we had a meeting in order to try to, um, deal with Saint Nicholas's concerns about the maintenance of the sidewalk. Uh, the city offered, uh, to provide permanent maintenance of that sidewalk in exchange for a construction easement that would allow us to construct that modular block wall. Uh, it would save the city approximately fifteen thousand dollars using that construction method.
Fifteen or fifty?
Fifty-five, zero. Per the letter from Saint Nicholas's attorney, right now we're not willing to agree to that proposal. Um, so the method right now would be using that sheet pile method. So with that, I don't know if they're going to get into any other specifics, or if the council has questions regarding that issue. I can answer any questions, I think. You know, the, the city can construct the project, as I understand it, from Dan's plans, using sheet piling without approaching on the Saint Nicholas property. Which one, the city can do that, and they're certainly within their rights to do so. Um, the assessment arguments, and the council's assessment deals before. You will, they'll incur, and will continue to talk and dialogue on the Saint Nicholas before we can get this resolved.
Well, I think ideally we want the modular, right? Well, we'd like to be able to at least have a, a construction easement so that we can touch their property or put in the proper retaining wall.
Correct, it, uh, it was a cons- consideration for consideration. So, uh, in order to get that contemporary construction easement, we offer the permanent maintenance feeling could be a win-win. But maybe, as Dan had mentioned and Larry had mentioned, we can construct a sheet piling within the right way. Um, unless some type of administrative breach, we'll proceed with the sheet pile.
And an extra cost of fifty, an extra fifty thousand dollars.
So, but we will hopefully offset that by not having maintenance on that particular stretch like we had originally offered.
That would take a long time to offset.
No, I understand that, but we would still have that on the table.
Right.
Correct. Is that accurate, I'm right?
Correct.
Correct. I would make a motion approving resolution number one twenty-six dash thirteen, approving plans and specs, and order advertisement, advertisement of bids for the Fourth Street West, because that will be a street utility improvement, not to include the maintenance deal. Just a follow-up?
Correct.
Second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that if there, if an agreement can be reached with Saint Nicholas to.
Oh, certainly.
Go to the block, I don't want to, like, shut that off. But obviously, you know, we have to get that agreement before we go up for bids, unless we can do some sort of alternate, you know?
Well, the modular block is built, first built into the specifications as an alternate, but they'll reach a point of.
Oh, sorry.
They'll return, I mean, if the sheet piling is used, then, um, you know, there's not, there's not a consideration that I'm aware of or we can take on that maintenance.
One of the questions will be Trail, old town, uh, under eleven. Have you constructed this summer yet, Oswald?
Yes.
Do that happen simultaneously? Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Well done.
Thank you.
Uh, I didn't, you just had to ask, is anybody opposed to Fourth Street being moved down? I, well, you know what? Yeah, I mean, I understand it's a good process, but I just didn't know, I, we didn't really ask the question, is that who opposed? I see you're opposed. On the left side or the right side?
And concerns about the, the retaining wall, and that has not, that hill has not been touched in how long? I mean, concerns about, you know, you start going into that. I mean.
I, I, what do you mean, I don't understand. I, I just, I do, I, I, I love, I understand, I. Okay, well, if you don't mind, I'd love to talk to you afterwards. I, I don't understand, I'd like to. Okay, let's move on. Uh, nine eight, preliminary plant rezoning for Chris's block.
Thank you.
Wait, go on, sir. All right.
You know, we care a lot.
I know you care a lot. It's free, it ends with a Y.
Thank you, we're here tonight to, um, consider the rezoning of preliminary plot for a well on the two streets left. This is a project that the council had previously approved back in two thousand and seven already. We've been renewing the preliminary plot from a long, near basis. But we've been asking, has requested a change in the preliminary plot, so we're here to sort of review the whole thing. We're looking at twenty-four lots, and it's a very similar design to what we have looked at in the past. We shortened up the cul-de-sac a little bit, and two lots are now front and on muscle pro, but that's essentially the majority of the difference from the spot that you looked at before. As you know, we're asking us here if you have any questions for the developer, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, if you have any questions.
Cindy, you mentioned in this memo that, um, if the council's planning reports some minimal variation between the home and the condition, would be to be added? Are there recommendations on that, if I may, if you can, like, some of that? The planning commission didn't review that, um, was something?
That, um, it, it wasn't really discussed at the planning commission at all. But I did want to bring up to you all that, um, we have typically not had any conditions regarding what the exterior looks like, with the exception of the River. Funds that just came through. And typically, we know, have known what those are really going to be. They, they self-police themselves pretty well, when it's something that we, that we know, like, multi has requirements that, that architecture has to vary, and so we, houses can't be too close together. The issue here was that Cal's developing it, and he's going to sell it off to some builder or builders. We don't have that comfort level that we maybe would typically have. So it's more of just raising it up to you, it's, it's your choice, it's a PRD, so you could add it as a language if you wanted to.
What do you hear about Cal, what do you think school is like up there? Maybe you have some insurance?
Sure, I think, uh, Cal has something to do with that, we also, uh, I think, uh, basically, I usually work with custom builders, so we put out architectural plans and designs per the client's specifications and expectations. And what I've never seen in all years in real estate, uh, same neighborhood, same outside of town. The opposite of what the market usually connects. We have been recently approached by a number of builders that are interested in some lots, homeowners that have acquired a lot. And, but generally speaking, I'd say we would see, uh, craftsmen style, two stories, we'd be tip of the norm, uh, some Victoria styles would be interesting. We, we will maintain architectural control requirements as, as developers, and try to typically avoid, you know, four twelve inches and contemporary styles, like Victoria styles and craftsmen and contemporary market. I've developed, uh, one condition, Victoria, I was a developer in twenty-nine of those lots. Uh, working in Columbia Gardens and Corman, uh, thirty-four lots. You don't see two houses in there ever since.
Questions, other questions? Do they have? None, sorry, sorry. Um, there are differences. We're going to have to. The last two developments that have come in, um, there are variances as to the center. Is this going to be, I mean, why do we have the standards to begin with? Is this going to be standard operating procedure for every development to do from here on out?
Yes.
You mean, when?
Well, yeah, and they're all going to be in their lines for variances on the centers.
Every, since I have been here over ten and a half years, every development we have done has been a PRD, and every single one of them has had some changes to the setback requirements. Um, not necessarily every setback, but certainly some of them. Typically, the side yards have been relaxed to, um, in the, um, more like ten years ago, the, the side yard setback was being typically relaxed to five feet on the ground side, ten feet on the upside. We changed that in the ordinance a few years, a few years ago, to allow it to be seven and a half feet on both sides, just to make it easier from an enforcement standpoint. Um, and I do expect that that will be more than the norm, and it has proven to be more than the norm here. That begs the question of, should your ordinance reflect that instead of doing a PRD to address that issue? And you certainly could change your ordinance to have that be, to, to relax the setbacks within the ordinance, but you also lose flexibility as a city in proving it through the PRD process, and making sure that you have some comfort level of what it looks like. So it could be either way, but I do anticipate that you'll continue to see this.
Do you want to see? Do you want to see?
Pussy.
Because people all want to play with the pussy.
My concern is. Populous sounds to start each other.
But why, why is my, why are you concerned? Safety sake or?
Any safety?
With dangers of, 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 of security.
Well, well, one fire can spread like that. Oh, we got a fire department. But that's one of the main concerns. Uh, but we refer back to, um, the previous development, yeah, that was a, it's, it's more the cookie powder than houses, but you're going to go more with custom houses, it's going to be a lot different. But I don't want, the building, what's going on, right? All the windows.
Just to kind of give this reference, seven and a half foot side yards, they were fifteen feet between houses. If you're the Cloverfield edition in Chaska, they have six-foot separations, they're three-foot on the side of the houses. Um, these thirty-foot lots, they have, uh, seven, combination of eight feet on forty-two foot lots. That, to be quite frank, is what your new concept, your new town concept's called for. Uh, when you get into developing standards from that council requiring three to four minutes per acre, you've got to make, you know, lots, uh, so it's, in order to get three-type garages, if you do a seventy-foot wide building pad, you need to keep us seven and a half foot side yards, what the minimum would be, the maximum you should be going. That's kind of the product of what you call.
Okay, yeah.
Sure.
I did notice on the plans where the block protection, um, it says, "Set appears to contain blocks that are, uh, plans seem to determine whether the blocks, the blocks are protected and if they're in violation of those."
Right, so the, the block area is right down here between, what is it, like, the lots, right? The, even off two and three, yeah? And so you go fifty feet in, and there's kind of a line of protection that they're kind of showing right in here. So it, I mean, it is far enough away from the, um, the new proposed homes. And I think before, there was various issues when the developer was looking at maybe extending the cul-de-sac even further. And so that kind of got worked through with this latest design.
So the house is going to be able to, you're not playing over the back because the setbacks on the rear of the block? And, I mean, most typically, that, those will be the ones that you want closer to the streets.
Right, we eliminated one lot in this, well, so the previous lot, uh, quite a few of those twenty-five lots. We eliminated one of the twenty-five lots, House twenty-four, moved the cul-de-sac further to the north. So that kept building as quite a bit further away from that bottom block.
And then Christie Hills is going through, Christie Hills, like, two.
Christie Hills, yes, the street, and the shelter, and the walkway.
Those kind of the actual names on the streets? Well, mostly the actual names, Christie Hills and Christie Drive.
Uh, I saw a note from.
I thought it's one of the conditions that one of the street names has to change, so I'm not, it's all, it's all my.
I like that, and Christie, it's, it's confusing.
Next to me.
No. Well, that's your, your house.
We really need to have that decided before we do the preliminary plot.
Yeah.
Mylar has the names on it, and they want to read the mylars.
Yeah. I do have, I have two questions. One, um, when we were talking about who will be building these homes, are you going to have a number of different builders or one builder?
There'll be more than one builder.
Okay, and then, uh, are there sidewalks?
Yes, there are, there are sidewalks on each side of, um, there's one sidewalk required on each side.
Okay, and those are, um, public streets, not private roads?
Public streets.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Oh, when are you going to start?
Well, we're going to go through the final file.
Yeah. What do you think?
Four, four August.
Oh, great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, thanks, thanks, thank you. So we have a resolution, we're going to have to ask fifteen. I make a motion to approve resolution one twenty-three thirteen, eventing that replacing resolution number one forty-seven dash seven, approving rezoning, make cultural to rule, R two PRD for a development home, ask Christie's. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Here we go again, Cal, let's do it.
Thank you, Cal.
Thank you.
Uh, nine B, new business.
I'm sorry, I need a.
There's another resolution.
Okay, sorry. One twenty-four dash thirteen, page one eighty-six.
I make a motion approving one twenty-four dash thirteen, uh, approving the preliminary plot, I've seen it on the last one.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Once again, let's do it. Thanks, Cal.
Thank you.
On your bill. All right, uh, item nine, still needs re- a resolution design guidelines.
Thank you, um, as part of the historic preservation strategic planning process that the city has been going through, is determined, and the city's been various moments with the HPC and, um, through, is determined that the city's been, various members of the HPC and some city's council members for years have been talking about the need to update their residential design guidelines for the community. The last time that those were done were, was in the early nineteen-eighties, and they're, they're not particularly graphic, they're sort of hard to follow, um, so they're not particularly useful to the residents, um, in their existing form. We did apply for CLG grant this spring, and the city was awarded funds, the grant awarded was for twenty thousand seven hundred dollars. This needs to be matched by eight thousand one hundred thirty in cash and five thousand seven hundred and five dollars in any kind of donated match, which is predominantly the city staff and HPC member time. The cash match, um, we determined can come out of the planning consultant budget and the general fund budget split approximately equally between the two years twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen.
To redo?
To redo the design guidelines for the residential question. If you recall, you did the commercial portion a couple years ago.
What that costs?
That costs less than this. This is a bigger project.
Just in the HPC district?
It's just in the HPC district.
It's just.
Okay. Are there portions of this, thirty-four thousand dollars?
Yes.
No questions?
Whoa, wait, who's, who's doing it? The one o six group, or?
You'll have to send it out for bid, so I don't know who's doing it.
Okay, is there a, do you need a motion on that? Is there a resolution?
Yes, we do, there's no resolution, there's a contract in the, um, there's a grant agreement in your package, so we need a motion to approve execution of the grant agreement.
I'll make a motion that we execute a grant agreement for residential guidelines in the historic district between us and, does it stay in the subject? Who's it? There's more, some of these-
There's no historic side.
Between us and the mental historical society.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Excuse me, Mayor, just to go, Cindy applied for receiving that grant, which is pretty legendary, right, since Grand American, just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Can we convey her to the department?
Why, why is that, why is that ahead? Question.
Okay, no answer. You can talk to the rest of them. Uh, reports. Reports and summaries, uh, planning commission.
Planning commission, we did, do we need? We didn't need it. Um, Christie Fluff.
We're good. Uh, HPC?
Have a bet since last, HPC.
Park and Red, uh, Park and Red?
We're not on the twenty-eight. What did we do, Christie? I'm looking at the agenda, we tabled the swap review, I remember that.
It was a fairly short meeting.
Yeah, it was really short.
We talked about park conditions and the projects for the summer, and then we just did a quick overview on, um, some of the HPC projects we're working on, connection parking.
Right. Oh, and then at the end, we tried to recruit some of the Park and Red Board members to go on the future, that, the Park and Red Board and council was invited to, which was really, really fun. You guys missed a good, you guys missed a good time. So I hope we'll do it again, and I want, I want to publicly thank-
I've said it twice for that, and it's canceled.
I, I want to publicly thank Carver on the Minnesota in the end corner for hosting us, and Ken and his son Clay for waiting so great, and you guys. I hope we'll do it again, it was really a good time.
Who are there, sir? Uh, Fire Department? I don't think, we didn't need, got rid of that. Yeah. Uh, Skimo Days, still working on that, and then, uh, one twelve community leaders, that is not, we don't, we don't think they're doing the summer, do we? Carver County leaders, I don't think there's ever been any during the summer.
Is it summer?
Well, we sit back with that. Uh, personal committee? That's, uh, Park and Red Committee?
Okay. We're in there.
Okay. Uh, economic board?
We're in there. Uh, we, we did this meeting today, and I say, uh, we're, uh, we're going together on finding that we need to put together a plan. What? You're on a legal basis, I guess.
Alright, uh, is there any other business? Make a motion, good, Jim? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?